Hello, I'm Danielle Karns, Vice President for Innovation and Strategic Partnerships at Edmonds College. Normally, we host our candidates on our campus for in-person conversations. For the second year, however, we are again getting creative about how we interact. On behalf of Edmonds College, our President, Dr. Amit Singh, and the Board of Trustees, I'm pleased to welcome you to this virtual forum. I'd like to thank the Edmonds City Council Position 1, 2, and 3 candidates for participating today. Many thanks to all the Edmonds voters tuning in to learn more about the candidates who would like to represent you on our city council. Today's forum is sponsored by the Snohomish County Forum Coalition. Those partners are the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County, Snow Isle Libraries, the American Association of University Women, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Herald Media, and Edmonds College. Thank you again for being here with us today and participating in our democracy. Next, please welcome Jeanne Cravier of the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County.
Thank you, Danielle, for that gracious welcome. The League of Women Voters of Snohomish County is honored to join with the Forum Coalition to present candidates for the city of Edmonds. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in this forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we never endorse or oppose candidates or parties. We do take positions on issues that we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. And we are fiercely committed to empowering voters to make informed decisions. Candidate forums are a critical part of that work, so let's get started. It's my pleasure to introduce your moderator for this forum, John Bauer, Opinion Page Editor of the Daily Herald.
Thank you. Hi, I am John Bauer. We're just going to get right into it. I want to introduce our candidates for this evening. For Position 1, we have Alicia Crank and Christiana Johnson. For Position 2, we have Janelle Cass and Will Chen. For Position 3, we have Neil Tibbet and Adrian Freely-Millanis. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and I'm going to start off. First question, and we'll start with Position 1, Alicia Crank. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Thank you, John. I think for me it's been a combination of professional and community experience, having worked in leadership roles in the corporate, nonprofit, and community services areas, as well as serving on several boards and commissions where we have to focus on land use and budgeting. Currently, I'm the Vice Chair of the Edmonds Planning Board, which I've been on for almost six years. And I'm currently the Chair of the Snohomish County Airport Commission, which is our third year and actually embarking on an airport master plan and just reviewed the budget. Outside of that, it's been my professional experience, having worked in institutional banking, also having worked in nonprofit leadership, and currently functioning as the Chief Development Fundraising Officer for a statewide nonprofit. Outside of that, there's also been my other community endeavors in and around Edmonds and Snohomish County, which most of that can also be seen on my social media and my website.
Great, thank you. Christiana, to you. And if any point, anybody needs me to repeat a question, just ask, but, but, Christiana, please go ahead.
Yes. I believe that it's my education, knowledge, and experience that qualify me for this position. I have a bachelor's degree in political science, a master's degree in city and regional planning, and additional graduate studies in transportation engineering. I have knowledge that's based on 30 years as a practicing professional planner. I have also 15 years of boards and commissions and experience in my hometowns, plus 10 years of experience on the Edmonds City Council, which has involved over 500 meetings, thousands of decisions, and 10 years of budget planning. And I have a great deal of experience working with the public and involving them in decision-making.
Christiana, thank you. Moving on to Position 2 now, let's start with Janelle Cass.
Hi, everybody. I'm Janelle Cass, and it's an honor and a privilege to be here with you guys tonight. So I am an Air Force Academy graduate with a degree in civil and environmental engineering. And in the Air Force, I served as a bio-environmental engineer, where I cleaned up a lot of hazardous and toxic waste, as well as protected workers from exposures with things like noise and radiation. And after my time in the Air Force, I went on to serve in the FAA, where I continued to do environmental engineering work. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done, especially here in Seattle with the Greener Skies Initiative, because through that project, by working together and working with the public and aviation, we were able to reduce CO2 emissions by over 22,000 tons per year, and that's just at Sea-Tac alone. I want to bring that kind of broad-scope project integration with people to Edmonds. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to Will.
Thank you, John. I'm a fourth-generation immigrant and I love Edmonds. This is the place I found my American dreams. I'm also a resident of father, husband, and I build my business here right in Edmonds. As a certified public accountant, I have successfully helped many businesses succeed. And with my diverse background, I'll bring these perspectives to the council. More importantly, I'm a good listener. I make decisions based on residents and business owners' input and consider all stakeholders concerned. In addition, I'm a team builder. I will work with all council members and the members of our community to find practical solutions that is not based on partisan divide, but make decisions based on citizen needs.
Well, thank you. Now on to Position 3, and Neil.
Yes, good evening. My name is Neil Tibbet, and I am running for reelection to the Edmonds City Council against an incumbent. My educational background, I have a BA in communications. I have a Master's of Divinity, where I focused on conflict resolution, and also a doctorate where I focused on organizational leadership. For my career, I worked 10 years as a contractor and wrote hundreds of contracts, negotiated hundreds of contracts, worked with people on their projects. And then also, I have worked 20 years in organizational training, and finally, with my own consulting practice. In Edmonds, I've served on the Planning Board, the Transportation Committee, and also the City Council. And so I look forward to bringing those skills and abilities to this position. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Neil. Nice timing. Now on to Adrian.
Thank you, John. My name's Adrian Freely-Millanis, and I'm running for reelection to the Edmonds City Council. The reason I think I'm the better candidate for the job is because I actually get stuff done during my term. Some of the things I've got done in the last few years has been the Community Court Project. I prioritized Highway 99 for low-income veterans, senior, and disabled housing. I was a founder with Strom Peterson of the Diversity Commission, the LGBTQ rights, focusing on that. I also spent this last year working on the Meadowdale Beach Salmon Project, which I worked with the county on providing a way for our salmon to move upstream. And I created the homeless fund and the opioid fund that we have drawn off for various things, to include the homeless report that is out there, the Kone Report. And they're actually redoing the Kone Report right now. So again, my name's Adrian Freely-Millanis, and if you want to see getting things done, you want to vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. All right, our next question. And I'll remind our candidates that if you need to be reminded of the question, if you open up chat, you'll see it printed there as well. So our next question, what are the biggest challenges facing Edmonds, and what strengths can it draw on to resolve them? And we'll start with Position 2. Will, let's start with you. Will, can you unmute? Will, are you with us? Okay, well, Will, Janelle, let's move to you and hope that Will can join us in a minute.
Thank you, John. I would say the number one most critical issue facing Edmonds is a blatant dysfunction of our city leadership. Every difficulty that we faced can be attributed to the fact that we have dysfunction. We have seen this with the absolute debacle surrounding the hiring process of the police chief. Even though now we have an excellent police chief, the dysfunctional process cost taxpayers taxpayers over $120,000 in 19 months of time, which has been demoralizing to our police department. We have witnessed this dysfunction in the premature push for increased density without complete analysis of impacts to the environment, infrastructure, and in our community. The lack of effective civil discourse and respect for the community's input has led to the city's council making poor decisions. Luckily, our biggest strength is the people. The residents of Edmonds have fought for building height restrictions, stopping the waterfront connector, and recently standing up for pedestrian and traffic safety.
Good. Will, are you with us now?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Great, please.
Sorry.
No.
Can you ask the question again?
Sure. What are the biggest challenges facing Edmonds, and what strengths can it draw on to resolve them?
Thank you, John. The biggest challenge is our continual partisan divide on the council, when the focus is on the individuals rather than addressing the issues our entire city suffers. The second challenge is striking the balance between preserving our single-family zoning and finding affordable housing solutions. And the third challenge is our public safety. We need to make sure that our first responders are adequately funded, so that they have the tools to keep us safe, ensure our city and the streets and sidewalk are in good conditions. And my priority is to realize all these challenges. And our biggest strength is our people, our community leaders, and the business community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move to Position 3, and Adrian, do you need the question read?
No, thanks, John. I've got it. Well, I think some of the challenges are to keep the taxes low in Edmonds. I've always voted against taxation, and I believe most of the taxation is regressive. I want to ensure that we have safe streets by prioritizing public safety with the police department. And I want to invest and redevelop and invigorate Highway 99. Those are some of the challenges that we need to work on. Most of the candidates, not all, but most of the candidates live somewhere in the downtown area or close to the downtown area, Seaview, that sort of area. And Highway 99 has became a blight to the city. And we have to have people that are willing or interested in supporting the development of Highway 99. The strengths I see are the contact that is made with the 42,000 people that live in Edmonds. It's not just the candidates and their campaign people. It's not just the 25 people that are yelling at us. It's the whole city as a whole, and I think that is our biggest strength.
Good, thank you. Neil, to you.
Yeah, I think that our city is in one of those transition phases where we're moving out of the pandemic, we're beginning to reengage, we're beginning to re-envision what it looks like for us to relate to one another as a community again. One of our greatest strengths is our celebrations in the city. We enjoy Fourth of July parades, and we enjoy our art festivals. And one of the greatest community assets that's come together from our citizens donating and working and planning is the Waterfront Community Center. So we have a lot of community investment, and people are very engaged. One of the things that concerns me, though, is what's already been brought up, and that's the lack of civility between council members and citizens. Sometimes council members will treat citizens poorly and never apologize.
Neil, I'm going to ask about that in a bit here, so I'll let you finish your thought then. Good. Christiana, let's go to you on the question of the city's challenges.
Thank you, John. As the legislative branch, as the city council, is first priority is public safety. Second is infrastructure, including streets, sewers, storm waters, and water. Our third main responsibility is the budget and finances for the city. There are lots of topical issues that come up. One of them is Highway 99, another is Civic Park. We have pedestrian and bicycle facilities in the Edmonds Marsh and the Seaview Sea. And we also have issues about affordable housing and single-family neighborhoods. Finally, there's been a lot of talk about the dysfunction on the city council. And I think we need to do a better job of working between the legislative branch, which creates.
Thank you. And Alicia.
Thank you. I would say to tie it all up in a bow, so to speak, would be that there's a breakdown of trust. The citizens are not trusting our decision-makers, they're not trusting those in leadership. So no matter what decisions that we make, good or bad, as a council, if the public doesn't trust the decision-makers, they won't trust the decision, no matter how good the decision may go. So I think the thing that we can draw upon is the fact that there is a much more engaged citizenry than we've ever had, you know, ever. And in part, that has to do with the pandemic. It forced us to sit down, it forced us to stay still, and to listen and pay attention to what's happening in our own neighborhoods, where we were once too busy because we were running around, working in different cities, having other responsibilities. So I think if we look at the fact that we need to create trust and build that trust back, all the other decisions that come down the line should be pretty easy to start having conversations about.
Great, thank you. A few of you brought this up, and I want to continue the conversation, because I do believe it's important. In your view, what's the tenor of Edmonds Council meetings, and even the exchanges among council members and the administration? And what changes, if any, would you support to encourage more stability and sharing of information and opinion? And Neil, as promised, I'm going to start with you.
All right, thank you. Well, it's fairly well-known that my opponent was seen with a glass of wine during a council meeting, and then during some critique by a citizen with that behavior, she flashed a loser sign towards the citizen. And she did apologize to the mayor and the council, but no one ever heard her apologize to the citizens. And it's that kind of behavior that is causing people to really struggle with the character and the consistency of my opponent in particular, but other behaviors as well. And so one of the things that I would look forward to as a council member is to bring consistency, to bring character, to bring my commitment to truth-telling and getting accurate information out to the citizens.
Thank you. Adriana, or Adrian.
Adrian, sure, no problem. First off, I did not sign a loser sign to anybody. I put a finger up to my ear, which is the sign, "I can't hear you." So they were on mute, but, you know, we have this sort of, this rambunctious group that is proceeding to do character assassination on a number of us. I think that the changes have to do within. When I spent the last two years as council president, I was under harassment continuously, harassment. This year, not as much, but now Susan Payne is under harassment. And it's the same people that are harassing her that were harassing me. So we need to bring this up. We need to have, again, bring a mediator in to talk about the stability of the council. I think that unfortunately, until we clear communications, which, by the way, the person that's doing the harassment has refused to sit in front of a mediator, but I think we need to do it, and we need to talk about ways of moving forward in an appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia, on to you.
Oh, wow. So, example, again, I think that when we talk about what the tenor is, I mean, people keep talking about civility and civil discourse. And I think the one thing that's missing is accountability and self-accountability. We can talk about, oh, council needs to go in front of, you know, a mediator, or it has to have some kind of training. But if the individuals are not taking ownership of their own responsibilities and how they interact, it really doesn't matter. You know, one of the reasons why I decided to run again was because I was able to host a series of online discussions where civil discourse was modeled each and every time. There were disagreements, there were different thoughts of opinion, but no one engaged in any type of the behavior that we unfortunately see on council. And that's because every person took responsibility for their action. So that's where it needs to start before you bring in any other group or mediator.
Great, thank you. Now, Christiana.
First of all, we have not always followed Robert's Rules of Order. Second, we do not have adopted council procedures. Third, we have a lack of communication between the administration and the council. We learn about things in public information releases, not directly. Finally, the council president has made it very difficult, if not impossible, to get items on the agenda and has this idea that you need four votes before you can even talk about anything. Finally, there's a voting block of four: Adrian Freely-Millanis, Susan Payne, Luke Distelhorse, and Laura Johnson, who vote together, opposing almost everything that the other three of us want to bring forward. And this has never been on the council before.
Okay, thank you. And now to Janelle.
Thank you, John. I think in order to get civility back on the city council, I mean, the tenor is pretty bad. It's going to take the voters doing a change-out in November. And unfortunately, what we've seen is that current, the four-pack, is not adhering to the Code of Conduct. And a lot of the people are really upset. We don't have extended agendas. When, as Christiana mentioned, when the three in the minority can't bring items to the agenda to discuss, then the people are being left out, and that's really unfair. I would definitely be in favor of making sure that we have process and procedures that are followed. Perhaps we need to hire a parliamentarian for a little bit, six months to a year, till we get it right. But it really is going to take a switch out, I think. So it's all in the hands of the voters in November.
Janelle, thank you. And now, Will.
Thank you, John. I think the key is, anybody, any council member, we need to focus on issues rather than the individuals, and we need to stop attacking people. And if you vote the wrong persons into the council, they're attacking more, and that behavior is going to make it worse. So if you are looking for a leader who can reach across the aisle, walking from the people from the left and the people from the right, you are looking at the right man here.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our next question. And Christiana, we'll start with you. How should the Edmonds Council best involve residents in decisions regarding budget challenges, new taxes, and/or service cuts?
That's a good question, because that's where we have the least citizen participation. One thing that we've done this year, Councilmember Vivian Olson started having a series of meetings in the community about the budget, and she's had about 50 people participate in that process, which is about, I'd say, about 45 more than we've ever had before. We need to work very closely with our citizens, give them proper notice of what we're going to talk about. The first time that it's on the agenda should be when we look at it in committees. The second time it should be on the agenda is when we're talking about it at council. And then the third time would be when we're doing a decision. Finally, we have this strategic plan that involved the entire community, and I think it's time to update that strategic plan.
Okay, thank you. Alicia.
Sure, thank you. I think we need to start having hybrid meetings around these types of things. I know that there are some people that have pushed back on hybrid, but the reality is, again, because of the pandemic, it's created challenges for people to show up in person. But the reality is, there's only a certain segment of people who could show up in person even before that. The fact that we've been able to move meetings online, make them virtual, whether they're live or recorded, has given other citizens in this community an opportunity to participate and engage. So my hope is that as we continue moving forward with this budget process and beyond, I applaud Councilmember Olson for what she has done, but I think you can go a step further. I would have loved to see these things being recorded and being available online, and having people be able to be able to participate remotely. Not everyone can get up and go, whether it's pandemic-related or it's family-related. So we need to continue to find ways to expand how we reach that.
Great, thank you. Will, to you.
I'm muted, okay. Yes, I think we need to go back to the basic of municipal government. And what we need to focus on is the big-time national issues. We need to focus on our public safety, our police, our fire, our street. You know, make sure that our seniors are taken care of. Go back to the basic and ramp up the public engagement. I think Councilmember Vivian Olson has demonstrated the engagement is very important. Like, what she was doing is a good model. We need to reach out to Highway 99, to Palenville, to Westgate, each corner, to have those town halls to engage with people.
Great, thank you. And now, Janelle.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I've been able to attend some of Vivian Olson's outreach meetings to get input about the budget. And I think that needs to be a robust, more robust, maybe, performed by the other council members. And I do like Alicia's idea of providing a couple of those meetings virtually, so that we can get more engagement. And that's something I did a lot of in the FAA for big government projects, to get that kind of engagement. I will say, one of the things that our council voted away was having the quarterly financial reports. I think that needs to come back, so that people are educated about how money is currently being spent and where there might be ways to better use the money, or for them to have an educated opinion about the budget. In terms of service cuts, I know that there were several people very concerned about their utility rates actually going up. So I think we need to listen to more of the people on that.
Okay, thank you. Adrienne.
Would you repeat the question? I don't want to miss any part of it.
No, I understand. How should Edmonds Council officials best involve residents in this year's decisions regarding budget challenges, new taxes? new taxes, and/or service cuts?
That's a great question. Well, first off, I want to make it really clear. I don't believe, I think Ms. Olson's attempt to gather people together was good, but it wasn't transparent. Budget is a very, very important issue and should be done on tape, should be taped for citizens to see, citizens to hear, and citizens to provide input. And as far as I was told, most of the candidates and a couple of the council members made every event or almost every event, which is good. I'm glad you guys were there to hear it. But the citizens were not given the opportunity to be part of that. And yes, we've gotten an email about what, what you guys requested and what some of the citizens requested. That's how come we have public hearings at the budget. I think we have, I think I was told, seven public hearings coming up. So hopefully, we're going to hear a lot more information. Now, again, how you reach the citizens? You get out there in your community. I attend events constantly. I don't, you know, I'm just not hanging out in restaurants. I'm out the city itself.
Great, thank you. And Neil.
Great ideas here. I really appreciate the input from fellow candidates and fellow council members. I really like that. One of the ideas that our council talked about a number of years ago was moving towards a biannual budgeting process. And I really like that idea because it spreads out the decision-making process with a, an evaluation period in the middle. And during that time, it's an awesome opportunity to get feedback from citizens. The other thing that's related to that is budgeting by objectives. That's something that we could implement right away. It does take a certain amount of vision for us as a city to identify our top objectives and, and then budget according to those objectives. And I would like to see us as a council move in that direction, learn how to do that together, and use that as a guiding tool in our budgeting in the future.
Great, thank you. Our next question. We're, we're still having to deal with, with COVID, of course, but there are, there's light at the end of the tunnel, I, I would hope. What issues remain to be addressed in Edmunds regarding the pandemic? And how would you address those issues? And Janelle, let's start with you.
Thank you, John. You're right. Well, everybody is trying to get back to normal, and it's quite challenging. In talking to a lot of people, what they're really concerned about are the vestiges of the streeteries that we have in downtown Edmunds. And while it was a really good way to respond and help support our restaurants, when I'm talking to a lot of the retailers and other businesses, they have been impacted very negatively. In fact, there was, so parking is, is pretty diminished downtown, and it's not fair to all the businesses to have those streeteries. So I'd propose that when the emergency ordinance that allowed these things comes up, that we have a robust public process to really find out if it's an appropriate way of giving away Edmunds property to just certain businesses versus some, doing something fair for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Will, same question.
Yes, John. The pandemic has impacted us all. It has explored the ratio inequities, negatively impacted our economy and our lives. Teachers are forced to teach their own childrens. We need to rebuild public trust by engaging residents like we stated earlier. And we need to support our business communities so that everybody can go back to normal. But most importantly, we have to encourage people to believe in science, protect yourselves, protect your family, so we can go back to normal. And I want to stress, I do put, I do support the absence of having a virtual absence for council meetings in person with the virtual so that we can reach more audience, more engagement.
Great, thank you. Neil, to you.
Thank you, John. One of the things that I have noticed, my, my wife is a school teacher, and she taught last year from a computer monitor in, in, at our home. And the kids are struggling, families are struggling to keep kids engaged. And it's, it's, the pandemic has really changed the way families relate to one another. And for some people, it's also brought on a different, a stress related to loneliness. There are a lot of health issues. People are outside exercising like they were before. And we're also seeing extreme cases of marriage and family conflict. So there's a real need for us to provide resources in that area. And I am in favor of tapping into the resources that come from Verdant, from some of our local nonprofits like Volunteers of America and
Thank you. Adrienne.
Thank you, thank you very much, John. For those that might not know, I've served for the last eleven years on the Snohomish County Health District, either as chair or vice chair most years. This year, I happened to be vice chair, and we are dealing with the pandemic. I, I, I think that as long as we have people that aren't masking up, maintaining social distancing, and attempting to, to be safe in what they're doing, this is going to continue. And my bet is it's going to be another year unless, unless we get people vaccinated. And a great example, and I think I, I just heard Will talk about the council chambers. A great example is we had a full chamber full of folks, and the far more majority of them were not masked up. Some were social distancing, but the far majority of them were not social distancing. And that can be kind of dangerous. And unfortunately, we can't change that, that picture when it comes to the council chambers. But we've got to do something different to protect everybody in the city.
Okay, thank you. Alicia.
That's a meaty question, but I really want to try to focus on what are the things that we can as council members or potential council members can actually affect. And I think it's the human condition, right? I mean, there's a lot of human services that have been highlighted that were not highlighted before. Honestly, the pandemic has kind of been something that has shaken the tree for all of us. People who didn't necessarily have to think about their financial condition, all of a sudden do, and find themselves in positions of having to, to visit food banks or see that their housing needs may not be taken care of anymore. So when I think about that, I think about human services. And I know that the city has hired someone to kind of help make some of these things happen and get addressed. And I hope that we do it in a smart way to where we're not reinventing the wheel, but partnering with the existing organizations. But I also hope that in doing that, we keep our thoughts around this broad. It gets really dangerous when we think very merrily, whether it's about homelessness, alcoholism, so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you. And Christiana.
Thank you, John. I think that this pandemic has created a public health crisis that no one in our generation has experienced before. And it's affected particularly our nursing homes and our schools. It's created a lot of area. Many of those ideas for walkable Main Street were imposed by the mayor without discussion with the public, without discussion with council. It seemed to favor one group of businesses, the restaurants at the expense of retail. It's created parking issues, and the streeteries are also taking away from parking. Positives, I think we've all learned how to use Zoom far effectively than others. And we have a new human service program manager and social worker in the city to help us deal with social issues.
Thank you. All right, next question. What initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues? And I know that's a wide range, but, but there are some related factors there. So let's start with Adrian.
Okay, okay. Well, this is right in my alley, I suppose. I have worked for six years on the city council to get a social service program kicked up and moving. To do nothing would be like Seattle, where you have people living in the streets of Seattle because they didn't do anything soon enough. We, we now have noticed a huge increase in mental illness in our city, in homelessness, in, in food starvation. And having a social service program that's able to send people to where the services are is really what is a very important piece of this. Get to know these people, find out what they need. Do they need drug rehab? What exactly do they need? We used to have a social worker, which I already, which I advocated for in the police department. But the police department chose to remove that social worker, just so folks are aware. It wasn't a decision by the council. It was a decision by the police department. But I think having a social service program is going to help out a lot with people that are feeling trained.
All right, thank you. Neil, to you.
Yes, I would like to see more emphasis on regional solutions. It's great for our city to have the social service resources that we now have. And, and I applaud the movement forward with that. However, Verdant Health also has a capacity to bring on social workers. And they have classroom space when they're able to do that, and it's a great solution for us. The Volunteers of America is going to have legal resources, language resources, and many kinds of classrooms. That's going to be great. I also support an ordinance in our city to prohibit public camping. And that is, I think, a very important strategy for us to notify people that Edmunds is not open for camping, and it's not open for tents. And to help people understand that there are programs, and we're willing as a city to help them get the resources they need.
Great, thank you. Christiana, let's go to you.
Okay. That's a, a good question. It's, it's a complicated one. I'll try my best. Regarding initiatives for homelessness, we did, when I was council president, put together a task force on homelessness. And what we did there was basically one report, the Kone Report. There is an annual count in time to count homeless people. The mayor has just created a new task force on homelessness. On the Housing Commission, council members appointed fourteen members and ten initiatives. On substance abuse, I was on a task force for opiate use. And we, we talked a lot, but didn't come up with many solutions. Mental health, social workers, and domestic violence, food insecurity.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, generally speaking, I would support any initiatives around these topics that involve public-private partnerships. That's the space I've been in for the past fifteen, twenty years. And I think it's really important for people to keep in mind too, that what's happening in Edmunds right now is not new under the sun and is not unique. So when we try to reinvent the wheel and say, hey, we're going to do it this way, and we're going to start from scratch, it's a waste of time and it's a waste of resources. There are those who are very much more experienced in these different fields that are ready to partner with municipalities to be able to address these issues and then have the breadth of experience and resources to be able to help us navigate these spaces. I worked for YWCA, Seattle Kingsno Homeless, for three years. I saw what homelessness looked like, and none of the women that we helped that were homeless had anything to do with drug abuse. It was domestic violence. It was other issues. And so when you can see that there are specific intersectionalities there, it goes beyond what we can do individually.
All right, thank you. Will, let's go to you.
Yes, John. These are complex problems that Edmunds cannot solve alone. We need to find reasonable solutions, work with our neighboring cities, even the county, and focus on addressing the root causes of the problem after we provide immediate relief for those in crisis. I believe we need to build on the success of programs such as embedded social workers who accompany the law enforcement. And also strengthening the private and public partnerships, like Alyssa stated. I'm in support, in support of that. As a policymaker, well, our job is to ensure that we find resources to strike a balance of compassion, support, and also the accountability for those in needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Will. And Janelle.
I'm so glad you're asking this question, as it's no doubt one of the biggest issues that we're going to be facing in our community. Most recently, about two weeks ago, I volunteered along some amazing men and women of the USS Chosen, as well as volunteers from the Hand Up Project, to do cleanup in a South Everett encampment. And really, within just a couple days, ten, tens and tens of thousands of needles were picked up. It was a glaring reminder to me that other, how serious this drug crisis is in our community. And I really believe that to address the homelessness associated with addiction, that it's really important that we make sure that the types of resources that we use, whether it's a housing voucher program, has accountability associated with it. So the main thing is to help people get clean and bridge in the gaps between detox and rehab, which is a big gap right now.
All right, thank you. All right, our next question. And I know there's been some ongoing work at the city level, but, but I want to talk about what has been done and what could still be done to support the, an increase in the stock of housing so that, that kind of keeps rents and mortgages affordable for folks, so that the people that work in Edmunds can live in Edmunds. And, and let's start with Alicia.
Thank you. I will say, this is a topic that is near and dear to my heart. It's such a wide thing to talk about, but I'm going to hone in on one particular thing. And when we talk about housing stock, what my focus will be and always has been is on the people that are currently here. How do we keep those that are here, those who are part of this Edmunds charm, to be able to continue to live here? I know what that looks like to get priced out of a community you call it home for eighteen years. And there are many people today here in Edmunds who need to downsize their home because it's too much house, too much whatever. But they know as soon as they put it on the market, they're going to have to move an hour away. And that's difficult for someone that's in their fifties, sixties, and seventies to do. So there are so many different things that can be approached around this. You know, I think one of the more immediate things I've been talking about is having detached G D U's, where they make sense and where they fit. But in any decision-making around this, we really need to consider the people that are already here, and how do we retain them?
Great, thank you. Christiana.
Yes, sir. Housing is a big issue, and I don't think we just need to talk about the people that are already here. Because Ms. Crane came here from Detroit to California, and she's lived here for six years. So she's part of our housing problem too. And I don't think it's just of allowing everybody who lives and works in Edmunds because the cost of property, the taxes, has increased incredibly. And it's not based on housing, it's based on land. I think that's the true driver. We had a Housing Commission that looked at a lot of issues. They identified ten. The City Council acted on one, moved two more to the Planning Commission. We have eight more to consider, probably after the election season. And there are many good ideas for
Right, thank you. Janelle, to you.
Yeah, well, I'd like to start off by saying, to think that our city council can make that big of a change in housing affordability when we're facing record-low interest rates and skyrocketing material costs and land costs is maybe a bit of a fool's errand in a way. So I don't know that we have that much power and control. And what I've seen in other neighboring cities, like Shoreline, when they have increased the numbers, like with townhomes, those were not those were not affordable houses. In fact, they had a very negative impact on the environment. And it's actually pushing out my sister in Shoreline right now, because she won't be able to afford to stay there. I like to think about the things we can do, and a few of those might be, why don't we look at the property taxes? What can we do to lower the utility rates and sales taxes so people can afford to be here? And most importantly, right now, ADUs are allowed. So why don't we give people free permitting to put an ADU so that it was an organic way of increasing housing options?
Great, thank you. Will, to you.
Thank you, John. You know, I'm very uneasy when I hear people say, if you cannot afford to live here, you don't belong. Because right here in Edmonds, we have people who are struggling with paying daily expenses. And many of those are seniors on fixed income. As a former Citizens Housing Commissioner, I spend lots of time discussing and reviewing different policies that will help us keep affordable housing options right here in Edmonds. Some of these policies, they are agree and voted for, such as the inner local agreement with HESCO has been implemented. I also support finding solutions along areas where public transportations are widely accessible, like Highway 99. There's no easy solutions. That's why I'm continuing to seek public inputs before making decisions that would affect our current zoning. Let's say, we must plan for growth, because doing nothing is not realistic or is irresponsible.
Thank you. Neil, to you.
Thank you, John. One of the largest redevelopment projects in the history of our city is the plan that we've developed for the Highway 99 area. And it is a public-private partnership that would identify and prioritize new homes while maintaining our commercial core. And the, just having that as an opportunity in front of us also helps us to look at some of the transition zones between the higher density along our major corridors, transit corridors that allow people to get back and forth from work using transit. It creates these transition zones where we can look at upzoning in between and creating some different kinds of housing than currently exist. One of the most important things that we can do is help people to stay in their housing. That's seniors, that's people who have sudden changes in their life. And we need to have resources to help them stay in their homes.
Great, thank you. Adrienne.
Thank you. First off, I'm not interested in upsizing Edmonds areas. I think Edmonds is Edmonds for a reason. I'm also not in favor of increasing the heights in Edmonds, which I know there are a few folks that are interested in this. I, and by the way, I don't vote for taxes for property taxes, nor have I voted for utility taxes. My opponent has, though, but I I I think that it's regressive. I think Highway 99 really is the key. Highway 99 is is transit-oriented development. It's a place where we could be able to get low-income housing, because Ms. Cass is right. Affordable housing in Edmonds isn't affordable. Predominantly, the majority of our workers in Edmonds are minimum wage jobs. And just from some quick addition, that's $2,400 a month. A affordable housing at Westgate for a studio, $1,700 a month for a studio. I mean, we need to find low-income housing in Highway 99. It's a perfect place to do it.
Okay, thank you. Good. Next question. Let's see. What what do you see as the most pressing environmental issues for Edmonds? And what would you propose to address them? And let's start with Will.
Thank you, John. Well, we only have one earth, and we must protect it. I would say that our environmental priority should be protecting the streams and watersheds from overdevelopment and the harms of these previous precious salmon's and marine lives from degrading wetlands. And that's critical to the health of Puget Sound. Equally important, we need to address the rising climate concerns by prioritizing investments in clean energy solutions and technology infrastructure. And we also need to educate the residents for the importance of environmental stewardships and support public-private partnerships in combating environmental issues.
Okay, thank you. Janelle.
Well, as an environmental engineer, taking care of the environment has been my priority for a lifetime. And I I do echo the fact that our our streams are in dire straits right now because of the stormwater runoff that's going on and the sediment that's building up and then going out to the Puget Sound. I have a background in bringing together really diverse people. So when it comes to doing repair at Perrinville Creek, which not only flooded out homes, but then became inhabitable for salmon, we've got a dichotomy of opinions. And when I worked on a project, an aviation project over the Grand Canyon, we were able to reduce flights by 100 and then zero over Zion National Park. And that takes bringing together cooperative teamwork efforts to come up with solutions that are great for the environment and brings everybody to the table.
Thank you. Adrienne. Or excuse me, yeah, Adrienne, let's go with you.
Sure. Well, you know, I was asked this last year, two years, to work with the Meadowdale Beach Salmon Recovery Project. So I gave a lot of input into the county on on what I believed would work through that area. I think our salmon recovery is one of the most important things, because we do have so many streams that come through Edmonds and our marsh, one of the only saltwater marshes. I voted for keeping stringent large buffers around that marsh for a reason, where where my opponent and the the block, the voting block that was there during the last mayor voted to bring the buffers down to like 10 feet to include sending a letter to the Department of Ecology, disagreeing with the majority of us that said we need big buffers. I think that if we don't do something about our salmon recovery, we're going to continue to see the orcas die. We're going to continue to see the habitats of of the creatures in Puget Sound and in our rivers die.
Okay, thank you. And Neil, to you.
In Edmonds, we've never shied away from big issues, and we've tackled environmental issues like restoring habitat at the marsh. I disagree with my, the characterization by my opponent with regard to the the voting block. There were four people who voted for 250-foot buffers. There, the Department of Ecology was recommending 75-foot buffers. And and I I agreed with that, and 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 yet now they're recommending 150-foot buffers with. And and so I think these are the kinds of big challenges that we like, and I am all in on restoring habitat at the marsh. We built a waterfront center that is state-of-the-art sustainability practices and billing issues. And I also think that it's important for us to upgrade infrastructure to lower our carbon footprint in our city.
Thank you. Christiana.
So many people have gone off in different directions. Would you repeat the question?
Oh, certainly. Asking about environmental issues and what what now I've lost my place. I'm very sorry. What are the most pressing environmental issues Edmonds faces, and what would you propose to address them?
Okay, I have four issues that I'd like to talk about. First is stormwater and how it affects our Shellabard, Jerk Creek, Shell Creek, Willow Creek, and most significantly, Perrinville Creek. We need to restore those habitats for salmon. We also have a big issue with the Edmonds Marsh. And we've had people from RIAA, Puget Sound Partnership, Student Saving Samons, and Save Our Marsh. We need to work collectively with all those agencies and citizens to do a better job as soon as it's cleaned up. Finally, we have critical areas, which include steep slopes, slide areas. We have we have initiatives by the city such as replacing the incinerating, other energy savings.
Okay, thank you. And Alicia.
Thank you. I totally agree. We need to focus more on the Edmonds Marsh restoration as well as Perrin Creek. I think a lot of the things I want to talk about, one that I we hear about all the time, especially coming us on the planning board, every single meeting is trees and tree code amendments and trying to find that right balance in different areas. And how do we protect trees, but also give property owners their rights and flexibility to do what they need to do? And as someone who's been here for over seven years, and the majority of the time in the southern part of Edmonds, I will say that there needs to be some focus on creating open space in parks on the southern end. That is an environmental issue. There are people that have lived there, whether they got there today or been there for years, if not decades. There's some environmental justice that needs to happen in that area. There needs to be a prioritization of being able to create pocket parks or something to create that open air and environmental space for families to be able to enjoy.
Okay, thank you. We're nearing the end of our hour, so I'm going to go to our final question. And that is, what want to give you a chance to to talk about a subject we might not have asked tonight? So what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of of Edmonds? And let's start with Neil. Neil.
Need.
Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the, one of the issues that I would like to talk about is is the fact that people across the city talk about the same issues and that they care about. And I've I've doorbell over 6,000 homes in in recent years. I've met many people from one end of the city to the other. And these are the issues that keep coming up. Let me list them for you. It's supporting our police and fire departments, so public safety. People keep talking about improving the environment and maintaining our parks and and also improving parks. People talk about supporting our businesses and our schools and protecting our housing and our neighborhoods. These are the issues that keep coming up over and over again. And when it's when these priorities are taken care of, people feel like they can trust the council members. They feel like they can engage with the city, and they feel like we're being responsible with the dollars that have given us through the taxpayers.
All right, thank you. Adrienne.
Thank you. You know, something we haven't talked a lot about is the equity and equality of Highway 99 and the people that live up along here. We don't have sidewalks unless you're going down the main drag. We don't have good lighting. We have one park for a third of our city, and it's got two parking spaces, and I think a handicap space. We need to start paying attention to the neighborhoods that are connected to this area along Highway 99. These people pay taxes just like everybody else does. I was, I was, you know, it's no surprise I was disappointed in the funding that was given to Civic Park or not at least cutting the funding to Civic Park to create a park program up along this area somewhere. I do thank the mayor for his looking at to creating a community center up here. I think that will bring us all part together as a group. And I just encourage all council members to take a look at the equality and equity of Highway 99. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Alicia.
Thank you. There's a couple of things I want to talk about. One is going back to public safety. I think one of the things that would be such a great idea to address some of the 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 issues with traffic and crime in that area would be the creation of a substation on Highway 99. I know it's been talked about for years, and I think now, especially because of the pandemic. And again, people are home, they're listening, they're more in tune with what's going on with city government and what's in their neighborhoods. I think there is some wide support to make that happen. So I would love to see some movement and some discussion on that. And again, I'm just going to go back to the whole thing about residents wanting to feel heard and listened to and doing that as an effort to build trust. Unfortunately, I feel like not going into compromise with the retailers downtown for Walkable Main Street was a missed opportunity. So we need to correct things like that and start to build that trust back in decision-making.
Thank you. And Christiana.
Thank you, John. As a former transportation planner, that's where a lot of my ideas are related. I'm very interested in making our our systems safe and fixing the potholes and completing our sidewalks. I also support redevelopment of Highway 99, extension of the SWIFT line to our ferry and rail station. And I want to look at a ferry reservation congestion. Finally, we did a strategic plan maybe seven years ago. And I think it's time to update that. One of the successes of that is we created the waterfront center. That was done as a result of that strategic plan. We also got a downtown restroom. I think we need to speak to our citizens directly and find out what's important to them.
Thank you. And Janelle.
I think public safety is on the top of everybody's priority list when it comes to their concerns about what's going on in Edmonds. And that definitely includes our our beloved neighbors around Highway 99. One of the things I do believe we need to do as a city council is to pass a resolution similar to that of some of our sister cities here in Snohomish County that would ask Governor Inslee and the legislatures and and our attorney general to have a special session to clarify House Bill 1310 and House Bill 1054. In talking with a number of the the law enforcement members, they feel like the risk versus reward of doing the job is not worth it. I've already talked to somebody who's already moving, a cop who's already moving out, and that's just going to leave us vulnerable and make Edmonds less welcoming and charming or safe for all of us.
All right, thank you. And finally, Will.
Thank you, John. I want to take this opportunity to share what I believe in. I believe in family, community, service, and equity and opportunities for all. Some people think Edmonds only belong to the elite, and that if you can't afford to live here, you don't belong. Let me tell you. I come to this country with nearly nothing and barely limited English skills, and now I'm a successful business owner. As a result, I want to extend the success and the opportunity that I have been given to every members of our community. I want Edmonds to be a place that people can realize their dreams. I want us to all live each other up. And we want this place to be an open and welcome place for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank our our candidates again for for a very informative evening and encourage voters to keep an eye out for their ballots and in the voter's guide. And really impressed with the caliber of candidates who are running for for Edmonds Council. So thank you.